I'd like to call this evening's meeting to order.
That's true.
Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Here.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Here.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, here.
Secretary Hatcher? Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Milstein? Trustee McKnight Morton?
Here.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would now like to entertain a motion to recess the monthly meeting and move into closed session to discuss collective bargaining. Do I hear a motion?
So moved?
Support.
Any discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Here.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
Uh, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Okay, trustees, we can now head to room 120. I'd like to now entertain a motion to reconvene the monthly meeting, excuse me. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
I'd, I'd like to make a motion right up to, uh, after, pardon me, to amend the agenda to move item Q, ratification of the Ask Me Local 1921 Contract, which is on our agenda as tab Q as an action item. I'd like to move that to the next item on the agenda so we can dispose of that right off the bat.
Support.
Vanessa? Oh, good. Uh, roll call?
For, I'd like to say something about it.
Yes, please.
I, I just want to say that the union has already approved the proposed contract. I, I'm really supportive of the wage levels and it's, uh, puts the minimum wage structure up to $20, um, which is something that we could be proud of as a minimum starting wage. And, uh, I'm happy to support this right off the bat.
Do you have anyone else? Discussion?
So we should vote to move it to the next item on the agenda?
I guess I did.
Roll call, roll call.
Vanessa, a roll call, please. Yes.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Now, we need to vote on the motion, which is item Q. I, I would move that we approve the recommendation that, to ratify a proposed three-year collective bargaining agreement effective July 1st, 2023 with Ask Me, uh, the custodial and maintenance employees at WCC.
Support. Vanessa, please? Yes.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, now we've got it. For tab A, uh, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of May 23, 2023, as submitted. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we move to, uh, citizens' participa- uh, participation. Um, we're there. Let's see. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm jumping ahead. WCC Education Association, Ms. Julie Kissel.
Hello?
Hi.
Well, it is June 2023, and while the summer offers many of us chances to use our time in different ways, we all remain busy and engaged at the work of the college. On May 26th, June 8th, and June 19th, the WCC EA met regarding the adjunct contract, which is Appendix E of the master agreement. After a brief impasse, we had a final meeting on June 23rd and have a tentative agreement. Yesterday, the WCCA Board voted to move the tentative agreement to the membership for a vote. The members will have a chance to vote on Jul- July 6th and 7th, and we're hopeful that the new contract will be ready for all of you to review during your July meeting. And again, I must thank the negotiation team for their time and energy working on this contract. The WCC EA is also continuing discussions with the administration regarding flexible schedules for counselors, advisors, and librarians. With negotiations completed, we can turn our energy to this discussion, as well as a discussion around an evaluation process. There are also ongoing interviews for new faculty, and we are preparing for more retirements and departures across campus. Again, these personnel shifts will come for the foreseeable future. Tonight, the Board will also have a chance to approve the sabbaticals for the 2324 school year. The research and development planned by my colleagues is fantastic, and I know the college will benefit from the time in their respective fields of study. Additionally, there is much activity around the review of the learning management systems and the future of our online programming at the college. With transitions, there is, of course, stress and worry that leads to some morale issues in, in many areas on campus. As I've repeatedly discussed with President Blanca, our institution is filled with so many talented and dedicated people. And the WCC has always been a leader in the, for community colleges in the state, and I don't think that's going to change anytime soon. But the many pressures in and outside the college will continue to increase. And it's so important that we engage as many people in meaningful ways across this institution. Because without this engagement, WCC's rich legacy will, of course, be tarnished. Now, unfortunately, many people, and not just those in WCC EA, believe that sometimes their voices do not matter, or that those with titles or mandates will make decisions without fully engaging those for whom it may impact the most. There are, however, moments when there is renewed collaboration on campus, and this must be the norm and not the exception. Clear, consistent, and honest leadership is what's needed, valued, and it's in the best interest of this college. The WCCA will continue to push to strengthen the lines of communication across campus and insist that our community college is focused on the collective growth of the members of this institution for the benefit of this county and the surrounding areas that so graciously support us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments? Seeing none. Moving on to written communication. Vanessa, were there any? Thank you. Special reports, mandatory audit communication. VP Terry Barnes.
I just want to take a moment to introduce our audit partner from AHP, uh, Ms. Tracy Moon. She's going to walk you through the scope of the upcoming fiscal year 23 audit, which starts, um, imminently.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Um, as Terry mentioned, we are ready to kick off the, uh, 2023 audit. Um, we will be starting procedures in, um, in a few weeks, actually, for our planning and interim procedures. And then our, um, actual fieldwork procedures will start in August, and we pretty much wrap up in September. So we do have a short, uh, timeframe. Um, but we met with management a couple of weeks ago and kind of got some things kicked off, got some updates from them. Um, what I'm here tonight is just to let you know, um, basically what the scope of the audit is and what the responsibilities, um, of us as auditors are and us, and what management's and your responsibilities are. So I think in your packet, you probably have a five-page letter. You don't necessarily have to follow along. You can read it at your leisure, but the responsibilities of the financial statements are management's with your oversight. Um, as auditors, we are there only to provide an opinion. We don't take responsibility for the financial statements. We do provide an opinion on the, um, their fairness of them and if they are completed accurately. We also, um, we look at internal controls and to, to help us design our testing, but we don't report on internal controls. And I think that's sometimes important because people think that as auditors, we do come in and we, you know, we look at them, but we don't opine on them. We don't issue a report on that. So it's important to, for you to know that, um, we don't, you won't get an opinion on those internal controls. If we see areas where internals, internal controls can be enhanced or bettered, we will definitely bring that to the attention of management and let them know about that. There's some other information in the financial statements, such as required supplementary information and other supplementary information. That is not audited either. We do compare that information with the audited financial statements to make sure that it's comparable, but we don't necessarily audit that information. Everything is, um, described in our opinion when we issue that information to you. As part of the scope, we do use materiality, so we are not going in and testing every dollar. Um, we do have a materiality level that we look at every year. That number changes based on the activity that's going on at the college, um, and, and how things have gone over the fiscal year. We also don't audit every transaction, so we, uh, we use judgment as we go in and we select our sample sizes and, um, the areas that we're going to test. Um, if during the audit, we, we have any issues with not being able to get information from management or, um, really struggling to find some answers, if, if there's difficulties that we're having dealing with management, which we've never had and I don't expect it, um, you would probably get a phone call earlier than September when we're here to issue the financial statements because we report to you and, um, you know, it's our responsibility to make sure that the audit gets completed. Um, so we would get you involved. Again, I don't anticipate any of that happening. It's never happened. Um, actually, in my entire career, it's never happened, um, for any of my audit clients, so. Um, we also look at, um, fraud, and we use that in our assessment of a risk. Um, we will be contacting members of the board. Typically, we contact the chair for fraud inquiries. We, um, we talk with management. We have checklists that are completed over fraud. Um, we do all different kinds of things and randomly select employees throughout the organization as well, so to see if they, they're aware of any fraud that has occurred. Um, I would encourage you that if you ever, you know, are concerned about fraud or have any, um, any kind of concerns relating to fraud, um, you don't need to wait until the audit to call me. Call me anytime and let me know if you have any concerns about anything like that. Um, on page three of the letter, we do talk about significant risk. I think I mentioned this last year. Uh, this is a new, um, it's a new reporting for us. We have to list in the letter what we consider significant risk. Um, we've always done this. This is something that is part of our audit approach. It's just never been reported to you. So that is in there for your information. We will have, we do have an, um, IT auditor on staff with us, and he does come in and look at IT internal controls to help us as, as auditors determine how deep we have to go into testing different, different systems. Um, it is not an IT audit. I don't want you to think that it is, and there is no report that we issue. Um, he's just there to help us facilitate our audit procedures. But we do, we consider him a specialist, an IT specialist, and we do use him as part of our, as our audit. New accounting pronouncements. There are a couple new accounting pronouncements this year that may affect the college. We have been working with management diligently on those, and, um, we will, the, the college will be implementing them if they're applicable to them. Um, and we will make sure that they're implemented properly and assist them if, if they need that assistance. Um, as far, we do the, um, external audit, obviously, the financial statement audit. We also do an audit of major programs, major federal programs. Um, this year, we will be testing, uh, Student Financial Aid. If you remember, in the past couple of years, we've tested HERF. Um, the HERF funding is very immaterial this year. We probably will not be testing HERF. We're going to rotate back to Student Financial Aid. Um, it is required this year because of the three-year rotation. It is a major program. Um, we do not know if there's any other major programs that we're going to be testing. We will be determining that in July when we start our interim procedures. We also do a audit of the foundation, and we do the foundation's 990 tax returns. Um, and we assist with the preparation of the financial statements. Even though we do all of those services, we do, we are still independent as far as, in accordance with our standards. So there's no independence issues there. And then the last part of our, um, our letter was just on our staffing. The staffing of our, what I would consider our management team for the audit has not changed, so there is consistency there. Um, we'll be coming. This is our third year. Um, I'm really excited to get back started. Um, and we'll have the same, our same team coming back and assisting to get the audit done, so. Any questions on that?
Like a team, is that, that you bring forward?
Okay, so there's, uh, myself as the lead, and then we have, um, what we call a senior manager. Um, she kind of does the high-level day-to-day. Then we have a senior that does really the day-to-day. She would be working with management, um, on a daily basis, communicating back and forth, you know, if we're, if we need things, if we have questions about analyticals and different things like that. And then we usually have a sta- um, we usually have two or three staff, um, as well that work, um, alongside us and do the, and actually do the work, work. Um, they should really get all the credit, not me. Um, and then behind that, obviously, we do, we have a, um, pretty robust quality control process as well, where we require two, um, a partner and a high-level senior manager to do what we call like an independent review of the statements. So they're not involved in the audit at all, except to read the statements and make sure that they're technically correct, and there's no misspellings and different things like that, and numbers tie back and forth. So, um, if that kind of gives you an idea what that team looks like. Yep.
Any other questions? I have a clarifying question. You had mentioned something about, um, county pronouncement?
Uh huh.
What is that?
So the, the GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, um, they issue, we call them GASBs, they issue new standards, um, I, I don't want to say annually, when, when something comes up. So, basically, it's an accounting change. They're telling, they're telling all these governments that this is how you need to account for something. Um, maybe, and typically, these come up because we've got one government over here that's, that's accounting for it this way, and another government over here accounting for it a different way. Um, and so they want to try to get that consistent, whoops, sorry, consistent between all governments. And so they issue a pronouncement that says, this is how all governments now have to record it. And they usually have the certain implementation dates. Um, so like leases would, was something that was new last year. Um, everybody has leases. Some governments were reporting leases. They were expensing them. Um, other governments were purchasing assets under a capital lease and had them on their balance sheet. This standard brought all leases onto the balance sheet. So it's just a, it's a way to make consistency across all entities. But it is mandatory. It's not something that you can pick and choose. If you fall into that GASB pronouncement, then you do have to implement it unless it's not material to your college.
Gotcha. Good question.
Yeah, whenever I hear this GASB thing, I've heard it in relationship to our pension?
Yep.
Funds and pension debt that, um, the state is changing policies. Are there changes there this year, or is it going along as it has been?
No, yeah, there's no changes with any new accounting.
Is how that's.
That's a big one. And my guess is that liability is probably going to go up because the investments probably did not do well. I have not seen the final numbers, but that would be, my, my guess is that liability number is probably going to go up on your balance sheet, just because the investments did so poorly last year.
Let's hope for the best.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussions, questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to tab B, uh, the recommendation for the Board of Trustees to approve the personnel recommendations as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved?
Support.
Any discussion?
But,
Treasurer DeVarty?
I'd like to call out and, uh, with a great congratulations to moving on for retirement, IB Remsen. On here is Irving Remsen, one of the best, uh, ceramic artists and ceramicists in the state and well-known throughout the region, not just throughout the state. Um, I've run into, uh, ceramicists up north that know IB Remsen, and have, uh, engaged me in conversation about how he's doing at WCC. Um, so it's after 18 years of service and all the things he's done with our ceramics program, um, I'm, wish him the best in moving on. And I'm really proud that we were able to have him here for the 18 years that he was here.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Um, thank you for that. I was also going to, um, say something about his service to this school and, uh, really appreciate what he has done. I think anyone who stays at, for me, any institution for 18 years is a kudos. That's great. Also, I want to ask, is there going to be a replacement for this position? There is a temporary, uh, posting that will go up, so that, uh, so we are posting the position for a temporary full-time, um, and that will give us time to also take a look and analyze the program, see what the enrollment's like and, um, just, yeah. I know at one time, there was, it was questionable, um, because of the enrollment. So I'm hoping that the enrollment has increased enough where it could be done because there's so many community people who loves this program. Who do love it. So we're gonna, we're gonna take a look at it, and, um, that's why I'm really pleased that, uh, you know, uh, Vice President Vega agreed to posting a temporary full-time faculty position, so we can take a look at that.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Anything else? Uh, trustee DeVarty? Did you take any classes under him? Is that where the ceramic bowls come from?
I, I did not, but, um, I have toured the facility and looked at all the glazes that he developed that are, uh, available to students that take the ceramics classes here, and they have everything from we, uh, spinning on the wheel to hand-forming to slab, slab pottery and all sorts of things. And when we have the art shows, um, I'm sure all of you have been able to see the diversity of types of things that come out of that department, out of that ceramics program. And I think it's just a top-flight program. Um, it's sad to lose such a talent as IB.
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to say that too. There's somebody out here.
In that category.
Right. Hey, um, do I hear a motion to approve the personnel recommendations? Did I ask that already?
No, but I,
Yes.
If you don't mind, Madam Chair, um, down at the Student Academic Services under Part-Time New Hires, I have a cou- couple of questions for that.
Okay.
Um, under the Public Safety, uh, new hires for Public Safety Officers. One, um, first question is how many full-time and part-time? And I'm just asking this question. Do you know how many full-time and part-time? I know somebody who does.
Okay.
Uh, Vice President Blakey?
Hi, these are, uh, part-time patrolers. So our full-time officers, um, James Cheese II that's listed there is, uh, we, you know, basically putting us back at full-time with our CROs, our Campus Resource Officers, which are, are sworn officers. And so, um, and then those part-timers are, uh, patrolers that are, we're back telling on the patrolers.
Okay. Are we at a level of personnel there with this department? When I say level of personnel, is there enough people there to, um, whatever we're supposed to have?
Yes, it took, it took us a little bit of time to get the officer. We were down a, a Campus Resource Officer, and then with, uh, the hiring of Mr. Cheese, we're at full capacity. Um, and then we are also, um, looking to possibly hire another person to help us with, um, WTMC in the fall. That'll be coming in the future.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, discussions? Do I hear a motion to, uh, approve the personnel recommendations as submitted?
So moved?
Support.
Been moved and supported. We had our discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to tab C. Uh, tab C, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees extend the appointment of Dr. Rose Blanca as President and Chief Executive Officer to June 30, 2026. That her 2023, 2024 salary be set at $280,000, and that the Chair of the Board of Trustees be authorized to sign a contract with Dr. Blanca on behalf of the Board. Do I hear a motion?
So moved?
Support.
Any discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Thank you. Tab D?
Thank you.
Oh, yes.
I don't know if I'm allowed to talk, but.
Oh, yes, you're allowed to talk.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yes, you are very, very welcome. Tab D, um, the recommendations that the Board of Trustees approve the 2023, 2024 Independent Staff Salary Range Table as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
Moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
All right. Round to tab E, 2023, 2024 Independent Staff Salary Adjustments. The recommendation at the Board of Trustees approve a 3% adjustment to the Independent Staff Salary and Wage Rates for the Secretarial, Technical, and Professional Managerial classifications, grade 109, uh, 209 and below, and a 2% adjustment to the Executive Administrative Classification, grades 110, 210, and above, for the 2023, 2024 fiscal year. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. DeVarty moves.
Support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Um, I think I'd like to, I would like to say something.
Yes, please.
I know I would. Um, this does not reflect at all the performance of the individuals in grades 110 and 210. Uh, they are outstanding, and we are so grateful for everything. But as you know, as a board and as a president, we have been committed to looking at balancing and looking at people at the lowest levels and bringing them up. And so that's what we have done in this regard as well. So, but again, the 110, uh, we couldn't do it without them. And so I thank them for understanding what we're doing and, uh, actually, their generosity because you're supporting this by not complaining to me. Okay? Thank you, and for everything that you do. Thank you so much, all of you. Thank you.
Okay. Tab F. The recommendations is that the Board of Trustees approve the 2023, 2024 Part-Time Support Staff and Club Sports Coaches Salary as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
Moved.
Support.
Are there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, now we're on, uh, tab G. The recommendations is that the Board of Trustees approve the 2023, 2024 Part-Time Faculty Wage Rates as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Thank you. Tab H. Well, it's, usually I like to ask if, um, VP Barnes could, um, add anything to the financial reports before we move further? So would you add some things before we move further?
Yes, I'll just add a few comments. Um, so we're 11 months through the year, so the numbers that you're going to see are getting, you know, close to final. Obviously, we have one more month to go, and we have the audit and so forth. But these numbers are getting more and more solid every day. Uh, I'll, I'll talk for a moment about tuition and fees, the spring, uh, tuition. I'm looking at the final column that says year-to-date variance, so we're about $244,000, uh, ahead of budget. The rest of the numbers I've gone through before on revenue, but suffice it to say that 7.671 million favorable for total revenue, I would expect that by the end of the fiscal year it's around seven. Some of that, some of that, we've just received money a little earlier than we expected, but I would expect that number to be around seven at year-end. For the expenditures, similarly, this number is 7.9 is the favorable right now. People do spend at a quicker pace in the last month of the year in June before the budget runs out for the year, so I do expect that to go down. But, but again, I would expect that also to be around seven approximately. And the other thing I'll point out here, this is just what was approved by the Board last month, this is a $3 million transfer to do the camera projects, you'll see that now in the financial statements, and we'll have another couple coming up later this evening.
Any questions, discussions? Okay. Recommendation is that the Board of Trustees receive the financial reports for May 2023 as follows, general fund, capital fund, and combined schedule of investments, all funds. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. DeVarty moves. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 First of all, I'd like to thank Treasurer DeVarty for meeting with Vice President Barnes and myself monthly and asking very good questions as we review the financials. And Vice President Barnes, I'd like to thank you for making sure we understand what it is you're talking about. And I really like, I really appreciate that you showed us right now that 3 million transfer and where it is. So thank you so much because that helps all of us make good decisions. So thank you.
Okay, moving on to Tab I, Facilities Development Report. VP Beschi.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'll quick go through the Facilities Development Report. There's a number of projects wrapping up that are noted in the report. I'm just gonna focus on and highlight a few that are gonna get started this month or be completed over the summer. Project number four, restroom renovations. That project pertains to the restrooms in the student center. We are gonna expand the scope of that work to include restrooms on all three floors and that design will happen over the summer and that project will roll over into next fiscal and go out for bed in the fall. Number 13, the concrete repair project, that work is underway, actually started this week. We will probably replace close to 5,300 square feet of concrete this month and early into And projects number 16, 17, and 19 all pertain to the Health and Fitness Center. Three projects all scheduled later this summer in August. One is to resurface a track. One is to replace a new floor in the weight, free rate area. And the third project, number 19, is HVAC repairs to the Health and Fitness Center. Those are really the projects that are scheduled for the remainder of this summer. And then we are starting to look at our fiscal year '24 deferred maintenance and starting to open up projects that will be on next year's deferred maintenance. So that concludes my report.
I'm sorry.
A little more detail on the concrete repair curb sidewalk? Where's that going?
So in terms of the concrete repairs, it's mostly, it's all on campus, it's all sidewalks. It's scattered throughout campus, a lot of it right around the student center. Our team in facilities works with public safety to identify really the areas that are the worst and it's an ongoing, obviously an ongoing project. We try to replace as much concrete as we can on an annual basis.
Trustee DeVarty.
Is the, so I see the sanitary main pipe repairs, the temporary bypass system removed this month. Is that totally done now and all, all set to go?
It is totally done. So the, we, we put the new system in, tested it, it's, it's working, the permanent system. They did come out the first week of June, the company that we rented, the bypass system removed it, hauled it away. We're now just trying to patch up the, the ground where the pipe was sitting and where they dug for the new system. But the sanitary re, main replacement as well as the temporary system are both 100% complete.
And just to refresh my memory, we increased the capacity is my recollection when we replaced it. We didn't just keep the old capacity. Is that, that was my recollection, is that true?
So we went back and redesigned, we took the flows from 2019, which is pre-COVID, and we put in a system that handles three times that daily flow, that max. So I mean, we're basing it on capacities from enrollment and numbers just pre-COVID.
But we've, we've increased it beyond that.
We have.
Okay. Because I remember really being in favor of doing that while we had this all opened up.
Correct.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
You're gonna have to refresh my memory. I'm on the second page, number 14, the EV charging design replacement. How many charging stations were we looking at? First of all, how many charging stations do we have now and how many are you looking at?
So we have 12 currently, all of them in the parking structure. We're looking, we have a design, and so we have two things. We have what are called fleet and public charging stations. Fleet are the, the charging stations that we are gonna use for WCC vehicles, our grounds, our, any electric vehicles that we as a college purchase and use. So that design, but to answer your question, in terms of the public, we're gonna design an infrastructure that handles 50 to 80 charging stations.
All right, then, thank you on that one. Now, my next one is on 15, baseball diamond backstop. Please explain to me why we're spending $70,000 on a diamond backstop?
Well, so the short answer, we have a baseball field that we use for our club sports and the community uses it. It blew over, so we have a backstop that, that the wind blew over and we have to replace it.
What's a backstop again?
A backstop?
Yeah.
Where people hit their foul balls.
Yeah, for it.
Yeah, big screen.
Required for a baseball.
National ball.
It's a large fence. It's a large area behind home plate that really goes really from third base to first base and, and protects visitors and keeps the ball in play or keeps it in the field.
Okay, so it's not that wire mesh or whatever that mesh screen is like we see on TV?
Say that again?
Well, is it a mesh screen or something?
There is. There's a sunscreen mesh and that, that is currently in the design and required because of the orientation of the field and the, and the sunset, the placement of the pitching mound, and it's a safety concern. So we actually have kept that in for safety purposes.
Okay. If you don't mind, anybody else has something to say, because I got two more things.
I just had one, but you can.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Really quick then, just with regards to the sanitary main project, I was here almost every single day dropping off my own students, so I had the privilege of seeing the work. I saw the day when the Batco was there digging the hole and everything. And the very next day, I was really impressed with how grounds had that ground leveled and you were already healing that surgical, you know, situation and it looks really good. Other than the straw being out there for the grass to grow, but it looks really, really good compared to how it had been. So I, I noticed and it looks good. Good job.
Thank you. I'll pass it on to the grounds crew. Appreciate that.
I'm not gonna ask this other question, but the Harriet Street move, I was unaware of that. Where's it going and why?
Well, we're gonna have a presentation on that next month.
Next month?
And, but if you'd like a short, short answer right now, I mean, we could give you a long one, but it's not on the agenda. Vice President Tucker, could you give us a very concise answer?
60 seconds or less. Yeah, so you know, the college has been a part of Harriet Street since 1994 and they've been in that building since about 1992. And Michigan Works, after a competitive bid process, is relocating to Ellsworth, which is about .5 miles down the street, right inside the city of Ann Arbor, because of it being on a bus line and because from a real estate perspective, they couldn't find any space in Ypsilanti that had 20,000 square feet of contiguous one-floor space. So they're moving to a new location, we'll be moving along with them and continuing our partnership. It's important to note that our D3C3 project, if it's YPSI, a few hundred thousand dollars a year in tuition, will be supported through Michigan Works. So our, it's important for us to have that partnership continue. But next month, we will bring to the Board our annual report on Harriet Street and Park Ridge and we'll have pictures and a little more detail.
Is this gonna be in that industrial area? Okay.
Yep, so right past Stone School Road to your right, it was a former clean room manufacturing facility.
Yep.
So double the size of the current location at Harriet Street.
Okay. I know what you're talking about. Okay.
Questions? Discussions?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Trustee McKnight Morton, that bathroom is gonna be in that renovation for student center.
You know, I wanted to ask.
I know. She knows, she asks every month about that bathroom.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I said, no, I'm not gonna ask. Thank you.
I do have a question. No way, hold on now. Reference to the EV charging stations and you had guesstimated around about 80 or so or less, doesn't really matter, but the stations that are current are in the parking structure, is that correct?
That is correct.
Is there a design plan to have stations outside of the parking structure where, like say in front of the student center or somewhere along the perimeter of the, of the actual buildings where a student or whomever comes to our campus does not have, do not have to go to the parking structure?
So the answer is yes. So almost all of the new stations that we're proposing for public charging stations are gonna be scattered throughout the entire parking areas. So it's a, it's a decentralized, what we call a decentralized design, so there'll be literally up close and near each of the buildings as opposed to centrally located in one big block.
Good. I'm glad you told me they were in the parking structure because every time I come on campus, I couldn't find them. Cause I didn't know.
We've had 12, well, we went from nine to 12 this year, but we've had EV charging stations there since maybe 2020, I mean, 2012, 2013, so about 10 years.
Excellent. Any other questions, discussions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your patience. Boy. Remarks from the Board Trustees. Want to have anything they'd like to say?
I would like to start off. This past Saturday, there was a celebration here in this room, the whole section here, Morris Lawrence Building, through a group of people who every year has been putting on, it's called Juneteenth Celebration. And I can tell you, I have been at several of them, but this celebration lineup was just outstanding. We had a keynote speaker, I would say his name is Dr. Tony Denton from the University of Michigan. He is in charge of the Vice President of Environmental, I can't remember all of his title, but it's quite impressive. He gave a wonderful, wonderful talk about the importance of, of people and how we need to be understanding of each other, respecting each other, and, and helping each other, pulling each other up, no matter who you are and what your title is, and how we can move forward in, in our relationships. The, the room was packed. Every table was taken and the food was very good. And I just want to say thank you to the President and to Patrick Downing and the staff, because they did a remarkable job in making sure that everything was right on point. We had other speakers, Angela, our Chair was the, what did you?
I gave the welcome.
She gave the welcome speech and, and her, I wanna say, her dress was quite different from everybody else's.
There was an African print dress.
It was beautiful. Everyone had a very, very good time and we have some pictures and stuff, but I just want to give a shout out to everybody here. We really appreciate the respect and, and everyone, the staff was very helpful and we had a great, great time. Thank you very much.
Yes, it was. It was quite exciting. The organization is called Community for All and eight years in the making and this, this particular event was a sold-out event, but not to take away from what Trustee McKnight Morton said, I did give a huge shout out to President Blanca and, and the wonderful things that she has done to really uplift and promote this college to the level of where it's at now, all the way to the most important people who are on the ground running the maintenance, keep it looking wonderful. So I'm looking here where it says landscape upgrades. Well, hello, everything was picture-perfect. Also too, I want to know, and I will get with you, there was a gentleman that had gotten up after scholarships were divvied among the scholarship winners to go on to college. A gentleman had gotten up to state that he's given scholarship awards for those who are less fortunate in their GPA category, the, the one-point GPA people that feel like they can't pursue their college dreams. And I will get with you on who that was, but I thought that was really remarkable to have somebody to come up that had, that was very much passionate and making sure that not just those who got educate, I mean, their scholarships for 3.9, but for those who flunked out but want to get back in, don't have the money, don't have the morale, but he's there to help and, and make sure that they also have a, a legacy behind them and getting their, their foot back on the right track. So again, I'll get with you on that. And so because of my crazy schedule the past few years, I had not been able to attend any of the SimCog meetings and I'm happy I had the opportunity to go last week, Thursday. So I'm back in the trenches of, of sitting on the Transportation, what is it called? Transportation?
Council.
Yeah, yeah, Transportation Something Committee. But I, I'm very, very much excited about it because it helps me to understand how, how the, the streets are laid out, why they're laid out, and where does Washtenaw Community College fit in, in that picture? I learned about road diet. I didn't know roads had a diet. That's reducing them from three lanes to two or two to one. There you go. So with all that said, I, I'm looking forward to attending more of the SimCog meetings to pick up where I left off. Go right ahead.
I'm sorry, I don't want to belabor this. At the SimCog meeting was the elections of all.
That's reducing them from three lanes to two or two to one. There you go. So with all that said, um, I, I'm looking forward to, um, a- attending more of the SimCog meetings to pick up where I left off. Go right ahead.
I'm sorry, I, I don't want to belabor this. Um, at the SimCog meeting was the elections of officers. Uh, Angela, like she said, she was elected to the, her, uh, position as delegate for the, uh, TAP meeting. I was re-elected as a delegate again and, uh, and Vice President, or Vice Chair, excuse me, and Vice Chair of the, um, of our, um, Association Education. Um, also on another committee, I can't think what it is. So, but any case, we're, between Angela and I, and myself, we're gonna be, um, very representative of this school to SimCog. They know who I am, but they're beginning to understand who she is. And I think this is gonna be very important for us to acquire some funding. And I'm hoping that, um, speaking with, uh, Mr. Beschi and the President earlier today about some funding, I think, uh, you know, we can still get some more funding that we don't have to always depend on the state for. So, um, I think this is a really good time to try to get it. Funding, SimCog really gets a lot of money. And they've had money because of the past, uh, three years of not being able to do anything with the counties and such. Well, now they have a surplus of money already, and they're still getting money, more money in from the, from federal government. So they, they have a lot of funding available. And, and I'm just really happy and excited that I'm there to try to pass this information on. Now, one more thing I'm gonna say about the celebration, and I'm done. Those, I think there was four students.
I think it was more than four.
I think five students.
Six.
Maybe six. Any case, four of those students, their GPAs one, was from three-point-eight to three-point-nine. Some are going to Harvard, some are going to, um,
Howard.
Howard, some are going to Yale.
Princeton.
I, you know, and Princeton, excuse me. But any case, um, there, these are very, very, this is very important. And, and, and for the school to be able to host this and so that the, and they're getting funding of fifteen hundred dollars apiece.
One is coming here.
This is wonderful.
Yeah, one's coming here.
And one is coming here, right. So, you know, this, this is what we were talking about, this is so exciting to help these youth. And it's not all of them are not, they can afford, their parents can afford it. But they have other student, children that are going to other prestigious institutions with, that have three-point-nine-eight-five GPAs. So I just, I just want to share that with you of how this was so exciting to see and hear and, and talk with these students.
Anyone else? Okay, now for President's remarks?
Yes, first and foremost, um, thank you. Thank you for your confidence, and thank you for the opportunity to continue to lead this wonderful institution. I will do my best, and, uh, thank you for your support and, uh, you know, your mentorship. It's a wonderful community, I'm honored, and our employees and students are very special to me. So, thank you very much. Um, but I'd also like to just very quickly say that we went to the Mackinac Policy Conference. I'd like to thank, uh, Vice President, Vice Chair, Bill Milliken. Oh, you're welcome, for attending, as well as Lori Mouton and Brandon Tucker and Vanessa Brooks. Um, the Mackinac Policy Conference is a long three or four days. And a very important because it's exactly that, it's where policy is shared, uh, the direction of Michigan is shared, and, uh, we have the opportunity to speak to leaders in government as well as certain companies, and it, it really is a great opportunity. Um, and also because of that, Lori, thank you, she had me on W J R with Paul W. Smith and, uh, some other interviews, and I, I appreciate that for our college. Um, Juneteenth, thank you Dean Reed, great job. Uh, we had Juneteenth celebration as well on our campus, and, uh, Dean Reed did an outstanding job, and I appreciate all that you're doing in that event. The, I'm sorry, the trade partners are back, that's great. And, uh, we have about five thousand members coming this year. Uh, we already had the wa, roofers, waterproofers, and allied workers on campus, and that was exciting. It just feels so good to get back into the things. So, um, thank you, thank you, uh, Vice President Marusi. Thank you, Vice President Tucker and Dean Dunham for all that you do, as well as for everyone else that has to support their efforts in making this work. So it's exciting, and I know that, I don't know, Ms. Kissel, are you, uh, teaching this year? Okay, well, thank you too. Oh, so there we go, and MCCA meeting, as you know, will be in July, at the end of July. And so far, um, Chair Davis, Vice Chair Milliken, Trustee DeVardy, and Trustee Fleming will be attending.
And I.
What?
And I.
Oh, McKnight Morton, they don't have you on here.
That's okay.
Make sure.
What are the dates on?
Um, July twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth. Thank you, yes, yes. I, I don't know if I can call on you, but I guess I can.
I have a question. How does Governor Whitmer's Growing Michigan Together program impact community colleges? That was announced on Mackinac Island, and that's John Rakolta and Shirley Stancato, who are co-chairing Growing Michigan Together, which the governor envisions as a study group of about twenty-five hand-selected people to, uh, figure out ways that Michigan can raise its hand, move ahead, and get some more national recognition.
Well, you know, education's got a real big piece of that. And so that's how, but are you one of the twenty-five selected?
I have, I have not been called.
Oh, geez, I was hoping you were. But yeah, but I'm sure education will be, uh, and education was the, uh, huge, uh, topic of conversation at the Mackinac Policy Conference in terms of the thirty by sixty, or sixty by thirty, and, um, you know, achieving completion.
Dave Egner from the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation, which just gave us a two-million-dollar grant, was there.
Yes, he was.
And, um, Michigan is sixteenth in the nation in terms of immigration. That was an interesting statistic. Eight thousand immigrants a year come to Michigan. Wow. But eighty-five-hundred people a year leave Michigan. So there's a deficit that results from that, and that's another reason that the governor wants to grow Michigan together. So there was some nice synergy there.
Thank you for bringing that up. Thank you. Thank you. That's it?
That's it?
I do have one more thing I wanted to, and I noticed it coming in, and I, I'm, I'm speaking out of turn. But I noticed, so coming down this hallway here, the, um, the audio performing department, it has all of the eight-by-tens on the wall.
Nice.
That is absolutely fabulous.
That was Eva Samoski.
Eva Samoski. Where is she? Is she here?
She's out this week.
She's out this week? Give her a huge pat on the back, okay? I really like that. I really like that, that, that's, that's awesome. That definitely, you know, um, upticks the interest in performing arts and, and audio and everything that falls under that umbrella. Okay. There's nothing more, uh, we can move on to TAB J, uh, for new business. Strategic Marketing Service Contract Renewal, I V P Lori Mouton.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for, uh, having me return. Uh, last June, the Board of Trustees approved a one-year agreement between Ojo Interactive and the college. Uh, Ojo Interactive is a higher education marketing firm, as you may recall. And the expectation was that I would come back in about a year and talk about our results thus far before we would seek approval to approve a new agreement with Ojo. So that is what I am excited to be able to do here today. So the primary goals that we established, uh, when we began our engagement with Ojo were to develop advertising campaigns comprised of both digital and traditional advertising, marketing, marketing and tactics. And we had two goals, um, specifically that we wanted to achieve with, with the advertising and the strategic marketing services that they were providing to us. One was to improve the brand reach and visibility of the college, both among those who know our brand and those who perhaps do not, um, expanding, uh, W C C and all the amazing things we have to offer to other markets. We also, uh, had a goal to support enrollment growth. And, uh, specifically targeting traditional age students, so high school to college, and that, and, and growing and sustaining our growth with those students, and then at the same time, growing adult learners aged twenty-five plus as part of our, as part of our, uh, plan. So enrollment growth at W C C is a team effort. Uh, it takes marketing, but it also takes a partnership with rec, with recruitment, which is Linda and Clarence's team. The role that marketing specifically plays is to bring students to, into the enrollment funnel. And that's primarily what we do. So when you look at this slide, it's really about, it starts with creating awareness. Creating awareness of the W C C brand and visibility in the market for folks who may not have considered using us, um, as their education, uh, higher education choice. Uh, at the, at the same time, uh, we also focus on, uh, moving people along the enrollment funnel in combination with our, our recruitment team to get people to not only be aware of us, but to consider and evaluate us, to consider or to ask for more information, to learn more about the col, about the college. And then, uh, to apply, and then eventually to enroll. So our goal is to get people into that top of the funnel through our marketing and advertising efforts and support and in partnership of, um, with recruitment to grow enrollment. So with that in mind, we, we have a couple of key performance indicators that we use to track effectiveness, um, with our campaigns and to track effectiveness against the goals that I just mentioned. For increasing brand awareness in particular, we look at the number of new and first-time visitors or users to our website. So how many people are we attracting to our website, getting to come to W C C and to explore and learn more about, about us? And then at the same time, we look at how they got there. Uh, you know, what path did they take to, to get there? And this would, the other things that we look at is more specific to the digital advertising that we're placing. So for example, how are search engine advertising and how are digital, uh, display advertising, both on Google and on Meta, which is Facebook and Instagram? How, how we drive people into the enrollment funnel through those paths? And we look at, uh, requests for information, inquiries, again, that helps expose people to the college and gets more people aware of us. How many people request or schedule visits as a result of our advertising? How many new applications are coming into the funnel from new students? And then also, how many people register for classes? You know, you can apply, but until you are admitted and register, you know, you can't grow enrollment growth. And then finally, those are kind of the leading indicators that we look at to track campaign effectiveness. And then secondarily, we look at enrollment growth. So I'm gonna talk about some of the positive outcomes that we've seen since we began our engagement with, uh, Ojo. So the, the timeframe that I'm gonna be talking about is between August, uh, first and May thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three, so looking at year over year, how are we doing on those key performance indicators? Uh, first and foremost, we want to know how we're doing on growing our brand and growing in awareness and introducing folks to the college, um, who might consider, uh, enrolling here. So Google defines a brand-new, or a new user, uh, or a visitor, I like to call them visitors, uh, to our website as someone who's never been there before. Someone who is coming to the website and is initiating, like, their first browsing session to find out what's going on uh, with W C C based on their particular interest. And from the period of August first to May thirty-first, twenty-two to twenty-three, since we've been engaged with, uh, Ojo, we've increased our new users or new visitors to the website by eight percent. So that's about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand new visitors who have come to the site for the first time. And so I'm very excited about that, I think that's a good, solid number, and we anticipate that that kind of growth will continue. And just to put it in perspective, that's about twelve thousand new visitors that have landed on our webpage um, each month, which I think is pretty amazing. So this is very promising, early results, I'm really excited about it because it shows that we're helping to achieve our goal to introduce new people to W C C and get them, uh, you know, through that funnel. So that's what we're trying to do in partnership with our, uh, recruitment team. So next up, I mentioned, so we want to grow awareness, but how do we, how are people getting there? You know, what are the things that we're doing that are making the biggest difference in getting those new visitors to come to our site? Well, fifty-eight percent of the new visitors of those hundred and twenty-seven thousand people within that time period are coming because of our paid search ads. So people searching in Google, and, um, then also display, people seeing ads come up on Facebook or on Instagram or in, um, and in the Google Display Network. So that's very positive. One of the other things that we expect to see when we're out there, um, advertising, you know, omnichannel, multiple-channel advertising, digital and the other things that we do, because Ojo is responsible for helping us with both, is we expect to see other channels increase at the same time. So, for example, you see here that, um, our organic search has increased ten percent year-over-year, um, which again is very positive. So a good way to look at that is, you know, say I'm a student and I'm considering W C C, or maybe I'm not even familiar with W C C. I see an ad today, I may not click on it, I see it, so that's an impression, so that helps to create some awareness. But I might not act upon it until I hear a commercial, listen to something on the radio, um, or, or see a billboard, or, or maybe a bus rap with, what do you call someone who said, who went to W C C employed? So at the point, you see the ad, you might not be ready to make that decision and click on the ad to do something, but I'm gonna come back and I'm gonna search. I'm gonna search for W C C because I remember something that intrigued me about that college, and so I come back. So that organic search, um, traffic has also gone up, um, for new visitors. So we're seeing, um, a forty-five percent increase year-over-year in people coming to our site from, uh, paid, paid Google search. We're seeing a, um, like, three-hundred percent increase on those who are seeing paid ads visiting our website, and then we're seeing a ten percent increase year-over-year on the people who are organically searching for us. But when you do one channel, when you execute one channel, it lifts the others. So those are all really positive indicators of how, um, we are doing thus far. So the other thing that we look at, um, and I talked about this earlier, in terms of the K P I's, the key performance indicator, indicators that we track, are what is happening as a result of the people who click on our ads? What kind of action are they taking when they click on our ads and, uh, go to our website? So, uh, we've seen forty-two-hundred-and-ten applications, about twenty-four percent of our total applications from the time period mentioned, um, completed as a direct result of people seeing our paid ad and clicking on it and then applying to the college. So that's a, that's a good thing. I don't have that year-over-year because we're tracking in a much more robust way. So next year at this time, we'll be able to compare that. But again, I think that's very, um, very positive. We also had twenty-six-hundred people who saw, who saw an ad, clicked on it, and then clicked through to register for classes. So, um, that is also very, you know, early, good, I think, statistic. Uh, we've had four-hundred-and-forty people request more information, where we've built forms within our website, uh, so that people who want to learn more about W C C can, can click on a form and inquire. And so we've had four-hundred-and-forty of those from August through May, and that's about nine percent of the total inquiries we have, um, for the college overall. And then finally, we've had about forty-seven individuals either, uh, schedule a tour or participate in a virtual tour. So these are just some of the results I thought I would like to share with you, um, because we are seeing action from our ads, and we will continue to grow, I think, and, and refine our approach to, to our digital because of the information we're gathering. The other thing I wanted to mention, uh, that some of the ads that we're running that are getting, um, the most interest are the ones for reconnect and adult learners and for accelerated programs. And in your packet, um, we created, uh, for Linda and Clarence and the team, um, to distribute it. And in your packet, we created for Linda and Clarence and the team to distribute at WCC and U, an introductory event for, for the college a few months ago, we created a hard copy adult learner success guide. So really trying to tap into, if you're an adult and you want to return to school, what are the things that you might be concerned about? And so we are creating this in a digital format for download that will be tied to our digital advertising as well, again, to get people to consider, hey, come back to school. You know, being an adult, there are some things you might be, that might concern you that are different than perhaps being a traditional age student. So we're creating this in a digital format for download, and then we're also building out some new adult learner pages to really focus in and target adults because we think that's an opportunity for growth in, in the future. But we're real excited about that. And the data that we are gathering, we're getting data that, and information that we weren't previously able to gather in a deeper way. So that's pretty cool. You know, we talk about data analytics all the time and how it informs us being better and creating a better user experience for our prospective students, and that is another benefit, I think, of working with an organization, a marketing organization like OHO. So the next thing that we track, again, is overall, just to show, not just inquiries coming in from paid advertising, but how are we doing from inquiries year over year for that same time period? So we've seen a 61% increase in people asking the college for more information. They want to learn more about WCC year over year annually. And that's been about 1,800 new inquiries, which again is a marketing and communications and PR person. I love that. So we're seeing some nice growth. And just to show you, OHO began with us, began managing our campaigns in August. They introduced new creative into the picture in December. And then we also began, and I, I kind of feel like, thank goodness we did, Google changed their tracking mechanism to a brand new platform that goes live July 1st of this year. And we completely changed the way we track because we were able to partner with OHO to show us how to do that and work through that transition. And otherwise, we would have had to figure that out on our own with our team, and we just didn't have the expertise in house. So it, it's new for OHO too, but they have a bigger sense of it, given the other higher education clients they have. So they've hosted some great webinar, webinars for us. They're doing some training specifically for our team on using, for our team on using that tracking, which will really help us get better and better at this. So the next slide shows how are we doing on applications for that, new applications for that same time period? So, and we've seen about a 5% increase in applications, about 86 new people a month applications, August through May 31st. And we think that's pretty good growth. Again, we've got people in at every stage of the funnel, so we will expect that to even grow further down the road, but I still think this is a very positive, positive indicator. And the other thing that's important to note, from a marketing standpoint, we look at it year over year on a fiscal year basis because people are applying. They may, what they do today may in fact, impact a semester next year, right? Or months down the road because you're identifying the semester that you think you will start after you apply. So just kind of an interesting point that I learned when I, when I came to WCC. So the final indicator is really enrollment. So those things we were talking about are the leading things we look for to track campaign effectiveness. So what's happening with enrollment as it specifically relates to traditional students, the high school to college students, and then also to, for adults? So in winter, we saw about a 13% increase or 126 new students in that high school to college audience. And then we saw a 9% increase of 37 students in that 25-plus group. And then for summer, as of, I may pull the numbers again today because, just to make sure they were fresh, we saw an increase of about 70 high school to college in the summer semester, that age group. And then we also increased new adult headcount by 20% or 58 students. So all of that being said, in summary, the results of the OHO partnership, I think, are going as we expected, and I think are very, I'm very excited about them. I think they're promising. I think they add some expertise we don't have and also allow us to benchmark. And our ads that we are placing, many of them are performing at or above benchmark. And for those who aren't, we will research, you know, why that may be. So we constantly have data to help support those decisions. They've helped us to increase brand visibility, given the new incremental visits that we have from people who've not visited WCC before, the WCC site before. We've seen an increase in applications and other actions as a result of our paid advertising and other channels that go up when you're out there doing, you know, broad omnichannel digital advertising and other means. I think the partnership with them, to me, really helps us to be more strategic with our current marketing investments. So I think we're, you know, we're trying to work smarter, not harder, to be able to introduce the college to, to prospective students. And we're also, I mentioned earlier, gaining insights we haven't had before. And I think that will only get better as we, you know, as we continue to learn and go with this particular plan. So my recommendation is that we, you know, this is probably no surprise, my recommendation is that we continue with OHO. I think, I feel like we're just getting started, and we've seen some early, very positive results, and I think that those could continue, and we will continue to refine our work with them and use what we learn to support our new student enrollment goals. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Rusty Milliken?
Do we know who the other clients are that make up OHO's client base?
Oh my goodness, I don't have it off the top of my head, but when we did engage with them, they had colleges across the country and community colleges across the country. I will double check, but I think they had around 100 community colleges, I think, that they were working with, working with. But let me double check. I haven't looked at the who in a while.
And the basis for that question is wondering whether or not we're sharing great stuff that we're producing with other community colleges? Are there account reps going to spread the word?
So we have a confidentiality agreement with them. And, you know, if they talk about things, they will ask us to share it. So I haven't done that because, I don't know, I'm really protective of Washtenaw Community College and the information we share, kind of competitive in that way. But, you know, there may be an opportunity for us to share that's general at some point in the future. One thing that, you know, I'm all about dashboards and figuring that out, and, and I think that one thing, when they came to us, they said, wow, you guys are doing some cool things that other people aren't, maybe you want to talk about it. But I haven't brought that subject up. We could, we certainly could, because I'm collaborative too.
We want all the great ideas from their other clients. We just don't want to share ours.
I know, there's a way to share, there's a way to share and collaborate, and I'm, I'm all for that if it, if it makes sense, for sure. Thank you.
Jesse Filame?
Just a comment. I definitely noticed a marked increase in Google Ad Display Ads in the things that I tour.
Okay.
I've noticed it in YouTube. I am occasionally presented a WCC ad. And in my games, I, I have an Android and I'm logged into the Google's Game Center so that you save your scores and purchases and whatnot.
Oh, right.
And I am occasionally presented WCC ads in my games as well. And that's new. I've never seen that before. So I definitely see the system working, so it's cool.
Thank you. Yeah, we're doing some different things we haven't done before. We haven't ventured into TikTok space yet because, and I know, I know you're going to ask about that, Mr. DeBarty.
I wrote it down.
Because we talked about it. And the reason is because we've been cautious about the security challenges of that, and we will explore it at some point, but we thought, let's get really rolling with Instagram and Facebook and Google Search, which is really, Google Search is very significant for us. But we will be looking at more video and looking at what's appropriate, given our security, you know, potential security concerns around TikTok. You know, we had heard that, you know, some public universities weren't even allowing it on campus. So we just are hanging back on that. It's not to say we won't do it, but we're a little cautious about the security.
It must have been, or somebody was looking over my shoulder, watching me write, write down on me notes.
That was me.
I do have a couple other questions. So one of them was about the TikTok short videos, which my daughter is working with, with a bookstore that she manages and her, is a co-manager in Brooklyn with a lot of success and share, you know, shared videos, which gets the name out there. I'm not sure there's, she, she can monitor how many clicks there are on these things, but does that, can you, is there a way to measure applications? Do you tie, I'm not sure it ties directly into a system where you can apply, but it gets the word out.
Yeah, and, and there's, you know, awareness is one strategy which we need, and like you said, conversions is an additional strategy. And it's like, how do you get the right secret recipe for that?
So, and then the other thing, do the OHO, does the OHO team come to campus or is all of the interactions with your team, marketing team, virtual?
Everything is virtual, and they have, their entire company has distributed their team across the entire country. And we do have some people who are located in like Huntington Woods, for example. And, and we had, I had their business development person visit at one point. But everything is virtual and we have a weekly call, and we work through everything through a program called Basecamp. So we're sharing all of our information every week, how we're moving through projects. And then I like, I like to talk to people. I know it's probably a surprise, but I like to be able to have a in-person, well, in-person virtual meeting every week. But that's not to say they shouldn't come to campus at some point, because it, you know, being here is different.
The reason I ask, it's our gaming center, which is, has a lot of appeal to this younger market, in my opinion. And I, I think it's proving out by the sort of track record that we're getting, Pete is getting from that. It would be great to have somebody from their team come and see that in action.
Absolutely.
Just to maybe spur some ideas with their team, but it's, that's the kind of thing that it's, I don't know how you could share it with them virtually.
Unless they see it.
If they're here to see it and to maybe get excited by it, maybe that triggers some ideas that can put, put programs like that out in the market. Then I wanted, I had a question that goes back a couple slides, and I wonder if we could go back where some of these percentages are?
Is it this one?
The, I think one before this.
Okay. Oh, you want to go to the visits one?
So I'm adding this up, percent of total new visitors. I add all these up and it comes out to 87%. How about the other 13%? Where do they come from?
That is a great question.
The other 13% of new visitors.
So the other things, I just didn't include it on the slide because there's a lot of them. So you've got people who are clicking on links, who are coming from email. So we've also, though a smaller number, a high percentage of people who are seeing the emails that Clarence and his team and Linda's team, that they send out and actually clicking on the links and coming from that channel. We are also seeing referrals, so links from out in the community, right? Where people may click on a link, it might be out there, maybe it's on Michigan Works, maybe it's on something else. And then the, the other area we're seeing an increase is in direct traffic. So people, which isn't organic search, right? You might say best community college in Washtenaw, you know, county, and we would come up, for example, for organic search. But for direct traffic, you would have to literally type in wcc.edu or click on that link on something that we, you know, maybe recruitment's using, you know, to send things out or we're using. So that's where the other traffic is coming from.
Those are not driven by our working partnership with OHO, but are coming, a lot of them from other people among the executive team.
So I would say, I would say both because, again, you have to see a message in seven different places to have it click. So they could have seen an ad, they could have seen, you know, Steve Boomfield out in the community at the high school. So yes, it's a combination of those efforts. And the idea being that a rising tide raises all ships. So if, if you're out there in the market and you've got a regular presence, then I, and, and what you're doing from a marketing and advertising and outreach standpoint, one thing is going to lift the other. And hopefully, we're going to touch you in some way to get you here.
Right. Okay, I've, I've got a lot of ideas in my head, as, as you know, from talking previously, I have a, a strong marketing background.
Absolutely.
I've got a lot of ideas, and of course, I wrote down TikTok.
I knew you were going to ask about TikTok because we talked about it.
Rusty McKnight, no, you're good. Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say, this is really enlightening of what you're doing in marketing. It's been a while since we've heard this, this type of strategy, and I think it's more so than what our, our association has been trying to do. I think this is better for our fit. I don't know about, I can't speak for other schools, but I can speak about our fit. And I think it's, it's going to work based on your, your, your contacts and knowing where to go and how to implement it in, in our scheme of what we're trying to do in attracting new students. And hopefully, and I'm just going to say this, hopefully, we'll be able to one day say, because other schools are having huge issues and difficulty in attracting students, especially in the outlining counties. And hopefully that we could try to share some of our strategy, not all of it, but some of it.
Certainly.
Yeah, because I really feel for them, and they are struggling very, very hard.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Moving on to Tab K. The Board of Trustees approved the revisions to Policy 6035, external use of college facilities. That is by VP, is it Marusi?
Michelle Marusi.
Oh, I'm, please forgive me, because I kept looking at the name and I was like murdered it.
That's okay. Good evening, trustees. I'm here this evening to present a recommendation for your consideration to update Board Policy 6035, external use of college facilities, and the elimination of Board Policy 6037, establishing rental fees for external use. You may ask, why is an update necessary? Well, the renovation of the Morris Lawrence Building sparked discussion about Board Policy 6035. Since the last review was conducted in May of 2002, we thought it was a good idea and an opportunity to review the policy to determine if we needed to make any revisions regarding board intentions, improving clarity and/or consolidating policies. As it turns out, after reading the current policy language, we felt that all three of these could be addressed. So first, with regard to the policy purpose, under the general policy statement, we feel that clarity and board intention could be established by adding the following bullet points. Establish administrative control and ensure appropriate use of WCC resources. The policy, again, the purpose would be to ensure the safety of employees, students and visitors. To protect WCC's campus buildings and spaces, including equipment and furnishings. Ensure adherence to all applicable health and safety codes and regulations. Enhance transparency regarding the rules and regulation for use of WCC spaces, and establish a process for setting rental fees. Second, under the policy guidelines section, we felt that we should add language, which transparently communicates the conditions under which the college evaluates requests to use our campus space. We are recommending that we change the language, a bullet, or add a bullet, to read WCC's ability to provide adequate support for the event. The college may reject a request in cases where approving the event would severely impact the college's resources and/or limit the college's ability to meet its primary obligation to its faculty, staff and students. Additionally, we felt that we could strengthen the intent that renters of ML use WCC's caterer by inserting the following sentence. In the Morris Lawrence Building, the college will provide food services to external event clients through its contracted caterer. In the college's sole discretion, in the unlikely event that the college's caterer cannot accommodate the external event client, the external event client may elect to provide its own food services, and we would propose that we continue to keep the language that is in place from there. Finally, we are proposing that we add language to require renters to provide proof of liability insurance to protect college facilities. We don't have this right now. Other colleges have this, so we, we believe we need it. And we are recommending that it say, the colleges, the college shall not be responsible for legal liability arising from an external event client's use of college facilities. External event clients must agree to indemnify and hold harmless from any loss, damage, liability, expense, claim or demand that may arise or be caused in any way by the use of colleges, the college's facilities. External event clients are required to provide proof of liability insurance of the types and amounts determined by the WC Conference and Event Services Department. of the types and amounts determined by the WC Conference and Event Services Department. All required liability insurance policies shall and collude WCC as additional insured. The guidelines, administrative guidelines that we write are only as good as they point back to a clear board policy and intention. That's how we protect the college. That's how we protect our guidelines and, and be able to, be able to defend them. And third, because Policy sixty thirty-seven, establishing rental fees for external use applies directly to the sixty thirty-five policy, it's recommended that we fold that sixty thirty-seven policy language into the sixty thirty-five policy so that we can eliminate sixty thirty-seven. Having separate policies just doesn't make sense at this point. Since one is pointing to the other or providing clarity to the other about setting rental fees, we're proposing that, that we eliminate sixty thirty-seven and just roll it in to sixty thirty-five. And finally, we would recommend adding a statement under outcomes, which clearly grants the administration the authority to establish and maintain guidelines and procedures. So, those are the recommendations coming from a group of us that work together. Patrick Downey, myself, Larry Barkoff and Terri Barnes in reviewing the current policy.
Are any questions? Trustee DeBarty?
Yeah.
So, I've got two things in here. And the first one doesn't have all the blue underlines and crossouts. So, I'm assuming that's the completed thing that you're recommending.
Yes.
And the other one is actually, shows us the changes.
Yes.
And then on the changes, you've crossed out all these related policies. Why is that?
Larry, that was a recommendation from you. Do you want to address that or?
Those policies still exist and they are related, but we're trying to move away from that sort of format.
So, those policies are still in existence?
Yes.
If we take this?
Yes.
So, there's, okay.
The only one that we're recommending that we eliminate because we're going to fold the language in is sixty thirty-seven.
Which I'm not sure what that is.
That's the ability to establish the rental fees for use of campus facilities for external clients.
So, that's, that's all, that all of this stuff that's in blue is coming from that?
Yes.
The language sixty thirty-seven, almost in its exact entirety, is being rolled into sixty thirty-five.
Gotcha.
So, we'll need to eliminate sixty thirty-seven as a standalone policy.
Okay, and generally, we look at these things and consider them for a month and approve them at the next meeting. This is the kind of thing where I'm guessing we have a lot of contracts being written constantly.
Yes.
Pretty much on a day-to-day basis, potentially.
Yes.
I'm just wondering, and I've looked this over casually. I haven't looked it over deeply. I'm wondering if it's advisable to try to pass this tonight? Are we engaging in contracts that it would, over the course of the next month, that it would be advisable for us to have this in place now as opposed to waiting in July?
Not, no, I, yes and no. So, we continue to write contracts and we've been fine under the board policy that's been in place. However, however, with the current language that exists, it just, it doesn't provide us the kind of clarity that we'd like to see in the future. So, should the board decide that it would like to, you know, to pass this tonight? Certainly, that's fine. But we're, we're, I'm so, we're totally welcome, you know, you're welcome to extent if you need to.
I'd, I'd certainly like to take a deeper look at it and consider it for next month. There's nothing in here that immediately jumps out as, but it doesn't seem like it's an emergency that we need to.
No, no, no. It just gives us a little more strength in terms of being able to point to some, when somebody questions something that we're doing or when we're making a decision, gives us a little bit more strength to point back to the policy with clarity that this is what the board intended.
I, I think that's all great. And, but I'd like the time, the month.
Sure.
To look at it, yeah.
That's fine.
And really think, think more deeply.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes. I, I go along with trustee DeBarty. I think, you know, we know, there's always changes. And a lot of times we say, okay, fine. But if we have contracts that already are in place and if we vote on it tonight, I'm just saying, if we vote on it tonight, would that impact those already in place contracts?
No, they'd be grandfathered, all those contracts that exist to their side, they'd be grandfathered.
Okay, then, then my next question is, is that when is the implementation of this going to be? When are you going to start implementing this?
Well, we've, we've already been implementing administrative procedures around board policy. However, we would not use this language, obviously, until the board would, yes. Until, until the board, that's correct.
Is it going to be?
It would be immediate as soon as, you know, as soon as the board decides, yeah.
Okay, but from my standpoint of view, who's going to, I mean, we will benefit, but the client will not benefit from it because they're not aware of it. If they've already, you know, down the future, maybe they are already in line because from what I've understood and heard, that there's a lot of people who have signed up to rent from us. And so, I guess I want to know is, when is the cutoff? When are you going to say, okay, we, okay, we vote on this, but how soon would it start? As soon as we vote on it?
But those would be potential clients that have not signed an, an agreement. Correct. So, that they would not know of the new policy until that time arrives. Is that correct? That's how I'm understanding it to be.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, we already have a policy.
Right.
And that's reflected in the one with the blue additions and crossouts. So, if we just think of the policy as it stands now, it's the stuff that's crossed out is in the current policy. The stuff that's underlined is not in the current policy, but it may be in this other policy that's six oh three seven. So, and we're just folding it in. So, a lot of that stuff may already be in effect.
That's correct.
It's, I don't see any need to really do it now. Because you're, you're, the administration is moving ahead, renting things out. Have there been any problems with any of the rentals or anything that?
No, I mean, over, over the years, I mean, there have been questions and there have been issues that have arisen. But the opportunity, I mean, we've worked through those. The opportunity, though, with the renovation of the building, it is just time. It's, it's been a long time, yeah.
If, if it pleases, I mean, I'd say, let's go with the current way we do things and look this over for the month.
That's fine.
On the casual look I've given it, it all looks good to me at the moment.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bill, did you, Bill? Did you have something that you wanted to say? Okay. Good.
Good for the month.
Good for the month.
I am too.
Okay.
You know, policies are always needing to be updated and refreshed. And this is something that falls along that category that needs to be refreshed. So, we are good to hold off for the end of next month. And we'll come back to it again with our thoughts.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And so, Tab L then brings us to the elimination of Policy sixty thirty-seven on the facilities rental fee policy, General Counsel Larry Barkoff.
Chair Davis, it's kind of a companion.
Take a care.
Recommendation proposal to Tab K. In that, all of that language, all those requirements will be rolled into sixty thirty-five. So, if you approve sixty thirty-five, we'll need to also approve the elimination of sixty thirty-seven because it, we no longer need that as a standalone policy.
Okay.
So, it, a companion vote.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on to Tab M, the establish, the establishment of a green fund. Oh, VP Barnes.
Surprise. So, as, as you may know, one of our strategic priorities is to strive to have a carbon neutral footprint by the year twenty thirty. And we've started purchasing a limited number, a very limited number of EVs, such as a lawnmower, we've got a couple of other vehicles on order. But we really can't expand our fleet of EVs without the internal charging infrastructure to have that fleet. So, what we're proposing here is to establish that infrastructure. This is not yet for the public. This is the internal infrastructure. We're proposing to put infrastructure in the shipping and receiving building or near the shipping and receiving building and in the parking garage, in a certain area of the parking garage that would support the vehicles that we need for the college, the operation of the college. What we've estimated here for the SRB, we've, these are high-level estimates for now, but about five hundred thousand dollars to put the charging infrastructure for SRB and about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the parking garage. And another two hundred and fifty thousand, just as a fund to start purchasing more EVs. So, the idea basically is, as our vehicles with internal combustion engines reach the end of their useful life, they would then be replaced with an EV, provided that there was an EV available in the market. So, there are certain vehicles which we wouldn't be able to necessarily replace, like very large trucks, for example. At least not yet. So, those would still remain. But anything that we could replace with an EV, we would. So, we're, in total, we're proposing to establish this fund with one million dollars total. We would, the board would still see if we have projects that are coming forward, you know, that reach the board threshold. Of course, we would still come here and tell you, we'd like to use X amount of funds that are here for this particular project. This is just establishing the fund so that we have it. And we would report out on it.
Questions? Trustee McNamara?
So, we're starting out with a million dollars from the general fund. Is this going to be ongoing?
Yes, it'll be ongoing. It, it'll be periodic. I won't say it'll be annual. We'll have to take it, in each budget cycle, we'll have to look and see how much we need, if any. It depends on how quickly we can establish the infrastructure. And, and also, we have to have a plan for when the vehicles are going to reach the end of their useful life. How much will we need in order to replace them? But it does make it much easier to purchase vehicles because one of the problems we've run into, in addition to having the lack of infrastructure, is because the supply of EVs is so limited, we can order an EV at the beginning of the fiscal year in July and it's still not here in June. So, it creates a huge issue because people have planned this in their budget and they can't spend it. And then they have to plan for it in the next budget, which we may or may not have for them. So, this sets the money aside so that we can count on having this money for this green fund, for this purpose.
Trustee DeBarty?
Well, I'd like to move this for action. The establishment of a green fund with an initial one million dollars to be transferred from the college's general fund to this newly established fund. Support? And then I'd, I'll speak to it. We, I looked at this last month and I love this idea. It's a modest beginning, so I'm in strong support of it. I can't wait to see that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, what's that? Five Teslas that our security people are going to be driving? That's a joke.
No, I know, I know.
Just for the public out there, that's a joke. But I do recognize that as our internal combustion engine vehicles reach the end of their life and we start replacing them with these EVs, that we do need lead time to order those, to get them on, you know, at the, on the campus where, as the internal combustion engine vehicles are leaving the campus.
Yes.
So, it's, I think it's great to start this now and I'm strongly supported. Internal, internal combustion engines are at risk, clearly. Estimates are that in twenty thirty, that fifty percent of new vehicle sales will be EVs. Or if you listen to Secretary Granholm, sixty percent of new vehicle sales in twenty thirty will be EVs. Internal combustion engines are more expensive to maintain. They have more moving parts. And the EV wave is coming. And this is a great time to embrace it and a great way to embrace it. So, I think this is a great idea.
Great idea. But when it comes time for us to move out the old and bring in the new, how, what avenues are we going to take advantage of to maybe recoup some of that recycling cost? You know, like for us to come, for that money to come to us as payment? Like, okay, you know, like are you scrap copper or metal?
Oh, you mean for when we scrap the vehicles?
Yeah, so.
No, we do, if the vehicle is completely spent, we, we scrap it. So, we get a modest fee for the materials, a few hundred dollars. But if it's still a workable vehicle, it's just not a workable vehicle for us. We can sell it through Public Surplus, which is a site that we use to sell old equipment that some others might, might find useful.
Okay. Any other questions, discussions? All right, so the Board of Trustees approved the establishment of a green fund with the, an initial one million dollars to be transferred from the college's general fund to this newly established fund. Do I hear a motion?
We have a motion and support.
You have a motion, it's been supported?
We, yeah.
Okay, the roll call, we do a discussion. All right, roll call, please, Vanessa.
Thank you.
Yes.
Vice Chair.
Yes.
Chair DeBarty?
DeBarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair. Moving on to Tab N. Transfer of the general fund to the capital fund. Recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the transfer of seven, seven million dollars from the college's general fund to its capital fund to support future projects. VP Barnes?
Yeah, this is basically a proposal regarding good financial stewardship so that we're proactively planning for our future, future capital projects. If you'll recall, back in March and April, when I was presenting to you the, the budget proposal, we have a significant amount of capital that we're going to need to spend over the coming months and years to, to do various very large projects. We've listed three here of the big ones that are coming up. For, for example, the Student Center HVAC, the front entrance and the electric vehicle battery lab. Just those three alone are sixteen million dollars. So, we're trying to be prudent and plan ahead. And as you saw in my earlier presentation, when I presented the financials, the revenues are doing a bit better than expected. Expenditures also a bit better than expected. So, we're set, we would like to set some money aside so that we have that money available to, to, to execute these projects when they come along. We've also put in here that we'd like to be able to make minor adjustments to the capital fund. So, for example, I don't know if you recall, but a few months ago, I asked the board to transfer, sometimes when we finish a capital project, we have a few thousand dollars left over. And rather than have to come back to the board, for example, to take that money and put it back into a general use, we'd like to be able to just put it back in the undesigned. So, it would continue to be in the capital fund. We would just move it away from specific projects and put it back in the capital. So, just what we're asking is, in addition to transferring the seven million dollars, is that the administration be given that ability to make those kinds of minor adjustments? It'll still be transparent to the board, but just, it's just for administrative ease.
Trustee DeBarty?
So, there's this recommendation, I was prepared to make this motion, which I'll, that the Board of Trustees approve a transfer of seven million dollars from the college's general fund to its capital fund to support future projects. There's no language in here about the administrative authority to move around surplus from other projects. Is that a separate motion somewhere?
We've concluded it in the language, I don't know, Larry. We've included it in the language when we gave you the background, but you're right, it's not in the actual recommendation.
In the motion? Larry, should that be in the motion?
Sorry, what are you asking for, trustee DeVarty? What do you state?
So I'm looking at the recommended motion on Tab N. And it refers to the transfer of the $7 million.
Right.
This is something we looked at last month.
Yes.
And it's, the money is there now.
Yes.
We know these capital projects are on the horizon. I think we need to, it's just prudent to set it aside now while we have it, knowing that these projects are coming.
Simmons?
It's there. Incorporate all of the language in background.
Page one at the bottom of the paragraph?
It's the last paragraph from the background. I didn't know, I'm not sure if we need to include it in the recommendation or not.
Make a motion to include.
It's in there.
It's in here.
Yeah, it's in there.
It's in the background section.
Yeah, it's in the background.
I don't think we need a motion to.
No.
I know they're usually small allocations. Don't you already have the administrative authority to move that amount of money?
It's not, well, it hasn't been cleared to me. I just wanted to clarify.
Fine.
I think we can go as is.
Okay.
Let's see.
What I'd like to do is make this motion as it's given for the $7 million. If our counsel thinks that you need the authority, it would be a simple board motion at a subsequent meeting to give you, to grant you that authority going forward, if you think they need it. So I'm going to make the motion. The Board of Trustees approves the transfer of $7 million from the college's general fund to its capital fund to support future projects.
Well, hold on.
And that's the motion that we were given in our packet.
Right. We have Vice Chair Milliken. He had his hand up.
We're in discussion. I have a question regarding one of the lying items here, the $1 million for electric vehicle battery testing lab. Is there any likelihood that funding or grants would be forthcoming that could help offset that?
Yeah, in fact, yeah, in fact, we do have a grant that is funding most of this. We just think that $1 million is what the college will still have to spend over and above the amount of the grant because a lot of this equipment will have to be hooked into the infrastructure. We may have to put in, for example, a fire suppression system that is specific for battery labs because it's very difficult to put out a battery fire if they were to happen. So there's things that we will have to do, and this covers things that aren't in the grant.
Mackinac Island is experiencing a lot of bicycle battery fires right now.
Oh, really?
Fire departments all over the country are looking at e-bikes and batteries for those kinds of conditions. But you're way ahead of me on this. Thank you.
Any other, there's motion? Okay.
Do we need a second?
Do we have a second on the motion?
I support it.
Okay. I trust we are discussioned out. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Chair DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Hey, Tab O. 2023, 2024 Department Chair Appointments. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the attached 2023, 2024 Faculty Department Chair Appointments as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
I so move.
Any discussion? Trustee McKnight?
Just a question. The chairs that are going to be appointed, are some of these recurring chairs? And they're, because I see some names I've seen here
Yes.
over the years, are these people appointed by their peers?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Chair DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
We're now on Tab P, Approval of the 2023, 24 Faculty Sabbaticals. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the attached 2023, 2024 Faculty Sabbatical Leaves as submitted. Do I hear a motion? Move.
Support.
Any discussion? Trustee McKnight-Morton?
I'd just like to say that reading the summaries of each of the applicants is excellent. What they're going to be doing and studying and reporting back to the board is, I can't wait to hear because it's so in-depth, and what they're doing is almost like going way and beyond what they're doing here at the college of being faculty, teacher, member, and colleague. I really commend each of these people in their research, and hopefully we'll hear their, hear their report of what they have done. I'm really looking forward to this, and I have my approval.
Trustee DeVarty?
I'm particularly supportive and really think it's a really wonderful commitment to our goals here to make education within economic reach of all the students in our community, no matter what their economic capabilities are. Her, Molly Leaderman, is proposing to further assess the impact of open educational resources, which is our way for students to take courses that they don't have to pay a lot of extra money for textbooks. And this sabbatical, it's like a commitment that she's making to really improve our capability to deliver the best education at the least cost to students in our community, and I really am impressed by this. I support all of them, all three of these, but I really wanted to call out that one as helping the board to meet our goals for making this education really reachable by anybody from any economic means. So I support all of these, and we'll happily vote for this.
Excellent. Do I hear a motion? Did we do that already?
I move the Board of Trustees approve the attached requested 2023, 2024 Faculty Sabbatical Leaves as submitted.
Vanessa, call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Chair DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes. Forgive me, I was looking at the clock. And I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn the monthly meeting. Do I hear a motion?
I move.
Support.
All in favor?
No discussion?
Meeting's adjourned.